I'd like to call to order the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners workshop meeting for Wednesday, June 25th. We'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This time, we have our review of the minutes. Are there any questions? We will be approving these minutes next week. Any questions of the Commissioners? From the Commissioner. Alright, moving on. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Haggard.
Good morning. On Tuesday, June 24th, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding contract negotiations and the purchase or lease of real property. I do also have one thing I'd like to disclose before we proceed with today's agenda because it pertains to an item that will appear before my Chief Clerk's report. During the June 4, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting, Budget and Finance Director Chris Davis presented the proposed human services budgets for the 2025-26 fiscal year and announced that this would initiate a 20-day public comment period, followed by a vote during today's meeting. That vote will take place during Chris's report today. However, for approximately 20 minutes yesterday, an incorrect version of today's agenda appeared on our website without that item listed on the agenda under Chris's report. So I just wanted to make sure everyone is looking at the correct agenda, and I apologize for my mistake there. Thank you.
For the purposes of that exact statement, I believe the one we're looking at even, okay, I just wanted to make sure that was getting revised even, just that the revised version was put on the screens. Alright, moving forward. Public participation on agenda items only. We have two parts of public participation. We'll have a public participation at the end, and for general, this is just for agenda items only. And there's a three-minute cap, and we are live streaming. Anyone for public participation on agenda items only? Just come forward if you would like to speak. You will need to say, state your name prior to speak.
Hi, Laura Harding. I'm a resident of Uptown Harrisburg. I'm here to speak on the contract for the healthcare provider for the prison. Just a little background about me. I was a warranted contracting officer for the federal government for years. I had a signature authority of $5 million, which means that I was trusted as a subject matter expert to enact contract, to obligate funds for the government on contracts without higher authority up to $5 million. So I have some questions raised in this RFP process based on this Penn Live article that I read. It's clear that members of the board do not have a comprehensive understanding of the RFP process. Some of the comments that were made by members of the board, such as Controller Mary Bateman, comparing the RFP proposals to a used car salesman and just telling people what they want to hear is completely inaccurate and unprofessional. Also, I questioned some of Frank Glavery's comments that don't appear, that appear to be his personal opinion, not based on any facts or evidence, and I don't believe that's his role as a solicitor. Also, as a solicitor, he's not a member of the board, and in the minutes of the meetings, he's listed as a member. So he shouldn't be contributing in that manner as a solicitor. Additionally, President Judge Evans' potential conflict of interest taints the whole process. And if I, if it were me as a contracting officer, based on this new information and the fact that we're now subject to protest from the other proposals, I would start the process over. I would not proceed if I wasn't going to accept the recommendation of the consultant. So in reading the code on this board, it says that the President Judge may choose at any time to delete his position from the board by so notifying the Chairperson and Secretary of the Board in writing, and I would make that recommendation now. He should delete his position from the board because anybody else he appoints, the whole is tainted. He, I don't think the judiciary, member of the judiciary should be involved in a political process such as this. Additionally, the code says that members of the board may appoint not less than two and not more than four additional members to the board who are residents of the county. I recommend that residents, up to three residents of the county are appointed to the board if the judge deletes himself from the board, or four positions if he decides to. And also, I recommend that
I'm sorry, three minutes is up.
Members of, who are members of RFP proposal teams, that they get some training from the Department of General Services because clearly, nobody in this county government understands the process.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Pamela Thompson, City of Harrisburg. I am here to talk about number seven that you'll be voting on under general items. Here we are, after 40 years of the same medical provider with, that has been on auto renew for 40 years. Yes, they are the local folks. And so finally, we do an RFP. And I attended last week's prison board meeting, and it was one of the most bizarre meetings that I have ever attended. And I have been coming to those meetings for years, and I probably have better attendance than some of the people who have been appointed or to that board, or who by statute feel those options. There was an executive session that suddenly happened in the middle of a meeting without clearly stating why. We had a President Judge advocating for WellPath without disclosing that his son-in-law worked for Greenlee Partners that represents them. We had a discussion about how we should go forward with Prime Care because they're in our neighborhood, they're local, and some of that meeting did not make sense to me until I read The Patriot, the Penn Live article. Excuse me, I'm old school. And then it all made sense to me. It's the same thing that we've been seeing over and over again. And there was no discussion, almost no discussion in that meeting about any of the other providers. I have downloaded and read the audit. I've seen, I saw the rankings. The top one was never discussed. How can this be? So I'm here to remind you that, as I often do, that in this discussion, we are talking about people. We are talking about very real people who are affected by the decisions that you might make about who provides medical care. Talking about the currently incarcerated people. I'm talking about the people behind me in this room who have been previously incarcerated there. I'm talking about the friends and families of people who've been incarcerated there. The CEOs, the COs and staff who want better things. It is unconscionable that we would be doing this after all the years that we have been through this, after all the people who've died. When we talk about the 22 people who've died, we're only going back to 2019. We are not looking. That was an arbitrary year. We're not talking about those beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, Brandon Basom, City of Harrisburg. I'm going to keep mine short. I really can't add too much to what Laura talked about with the incompetence and of the RFP process as it was, you know, undertaken. And I can't add too much more beyond what Pam said about the corruption that we saw that led to the two we have here right now. I will say that while I question the morality of locking people away behind, you know, prisons, I think it should go without question that when you do so, you're responsible for them, for their lives, their health, and their safety. You've had a medical provider who's been unable to provide care to an adequate level, so much so that there have been deaths and deaths by terrible circumstances. So while I understand whatever argument you made for value, you are responsible for their lives. These people who are dying in there, this will be on you, and it will be public. So I urge you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Givler. I live in Lower Paxton Township. I'm here also. It's my first Commissioner meeting. It's my first time speaking at a county meeting. But just to
Welcome.
Thank you. Say again about the RFPs for the healthcare at the prison. It is my understanding, based where I live in my community and the circles that I go in, that trust in our county government is not that great at this point. And when I saw and read the Penn Live article and heard the podcast, Death County DA, whether or not we agree with the article or the podcast, the trust in our county government seems to be eroded. And having WellPath and Prime Care as candidates, the top two candidates for the healthcare, is not going to increase that trust or do anything to repair any relationships that may be broken between the public and the government. So I would encourage you not to consider them at all. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dave Graybill. I lived in London Dairy Township for most of my life, and I'm a first responder, fire policeman, Meals on Wheels volunteer, caravan volunteer, food bank volunteer, Harrisburg Friends Quaker, registered Republican, and but I'm also active with a number of democratic organizations. Off the streets in Middletown, an activist with Hershey and Visibl on Third Saturday, which feeds homeless right around the corner. I am saying that because I've talked to a lot of people in those organizations, very active with them, and they all will, I can't speak for those organizations, but I know there are many people in those organizations that feel we are very happy to see reform going on, that in the prison system, it's very, well, very much needed. And we're very happy to see that you're contemplating going with this RFP process as opposed to some of the things that have gone on in the past for the Penn Live articles and so on, that have been recently mentioned. I would encourage open and credible discussions about this. I, just to give you a short example, one of my Meals on Wheels clients, her son was taken into the prison. He should have been taken to a mental facility. Unfortunately, he was taken to a prison, and within six months, he was dead. These things with the conditions in the prison, I think it was not only the medical issues, but there were also some environmental issues that caused the decline in his health and his death. And I'm guessing that that's probably some sort of litigation right now, but these have real consequences, and I ask you to please consider it open and honest. The only thing that I would add to that is, and it's just slightly off track. In, when I asked some of these people what it is they would like me to give feedback to, they said that some of these organizations like Meals on Wheels and Caravan need volunteers. So if anything you can do to encourage volunteers in those areas, and also, there's a 75-year limit on, apparently, that you're only allowed to do it to 75. I'm 73, so either stop the age discrimination or get some more volunteers. That's your time.
Thank you, Mr. Graybill.
Good morning, Commissioners. I need my shot clock, I need my shot clock reset. Yeah, yeah. I'm waiting on it. Oh, thank you. I didn't know that. Appreciate you. Kamiki Campbell, Shippensburg, Pennsylvania. Good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to come before you today to speak on the healthcare provider situation. But first, I just wanted to read a couple of headlines. In recommending healthcare provider, Dolphin County Prison Board ignores consultant rankings. Future of healthcare troubled at Dolphin County Jail to be decided this week. The public will not be allowed to comment, this was one from the 17th, before the Dolphin County Prison Board selects a vendor for medical service at the jail, future of healthcare trouble. And when we go back, and that's just in the last couple of weeks, and when we go back further, we see so many articles about people who have died, have been harmed, have not received care, who have frozen, who have been otherwise harmed, who are not receiving proper care. As two things in this community, someone who works very diligently on making sure that we voice the concerns of those who cannot voice concerns for themselves, it is difficult, it is difficult to see that this healthcare situation is still so glaringly obviously incorrect, like it's glaringly obvious. And additionally, as someone who championed, and if y'all never give us another dollar for Juneteenth, understand this. Juneteenth and emancipation is connected to the prison industrial complex in the United States. And us not speaking out about this is continuing the poor care that a majority of Black and Brown bodies receive in that prison. So that is another reason why I'm here. I will put it all on the line for that on purpose. Before I go off on another rank, because I only have a minute, I want to say this. My name is Kamiki Campbell. I'm writing to urge you to reject the recommendation made by the Prison Board of Inspectors regarding the healthcare contract for Dolphin County Prison. The public puts its trust in the RFP process because for over 40 years, Prime Care has held this contract without competition, oversight, or accountability. Now that we finally have access, now that we finally have an open process, it is deeply concerning to see that the two lowest-ranked providers, we wouldn't do this on a task. We wouldn't give people who got a D a shot at the top spot. That doesn't make sense. The two lowest-ranked healthcare providers, Prime Care and WellPath, are recommended while the highest-rated provider, Medico, was not even discussed. I will be attending, and I'm here right now, and we'll be watching to see what you guys do next, to see if our county leadership is willing to rise above old patterns and do what is right. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Good morning. Good morning.
My name is Cedric Humphrey. I'm 26 years old, and I've lived in Dolphin County all my life. Born in the City of Harrisburg, raised in Sesquik Township, Lower Paxton. Unfortunately, like many residents, I find myself constantly disgusted in my elected leaders at all levels. I'm continually disappointed by what I can only understand as a deliberate, wanton lack of desire to make decisions solely with the residents that you represent in mind. I say all of that to say that I'm here today, not just frustrated, but outraged. On June 18th, the Prison Board voted to recommend Prime Care Medical and WellPath for final contract negotiations. So let's be clear about what that means. The Board has once again paved the way for Prime Care, a company that's directly tied to preventable deaths in Dolphin County Prison, to once again provide care behind bars. This vote came after I and others publicly addressed the Board, pleading to not advance. This vote came despite a consultant's review that ranked Prime Care, and WellPath for that matter, below other vendors. It came despite years of documented lawsuits, medical neglect, and people dying in your custody in our prisons. And yet the Board, and yet the Board voted to move them forward as if that history doesn't matter, as if public safety, basic care, accountability, and human decency are all optional, as if these are not people that we're talking about. As I said last week, the prison is meant to be a temporary stay. You are supposed to leave that prison. And under the Board's leadership, way too many have left in body bags. Healthy people walk in and dead bodies come out. What makes this even more staggering is what I was personally told last week by the Board Chair, that she refused to even consider two of the submitted proposals because of past legal troubles or lack of financial stability. Yet somehow, Prime Care, a company that has exposed this county to tremendous legal liability, was still good enough for her. And to talk about President Judge Scott Evans, who was so very critical of the consultants' rankings and dismissed them without a second thought, and he wasn't just present for the vote, he made the motions that helped move Prime Care. All that tells me is that even our judicial leadership is willing to overlook death and abuse for the sake of familiar. And with regard to the advancement of WellPath and the startling conflict of interest, I don't have enough time for that. I think everybody else has addressed it. So I'll just say this. If you advance Prime Care, you cannot claim ignorance. You cannot hide behind consultant advice that you ignored, and you cannot escape accountability when this decision leads again to tragedy. You'll be on record as supporting negotiations with a vendor that has already failed this county. Every death, every injury, and every ignored sick call will be on you. So I'm calling on you to immediately reject this recommendation, negotiate with all applicants, and give serious transparent consideration to the vendors that the Board so casually dismissed. It's time to stop gambling with human lives, and I'm asking for you to do your jobs ethically or step aside so somebody else can. Thank you.
Thank you, Cedric. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Pamela Thompson. I'm supervisor from Lower Paxton Township. With regards to this issue that we're here today to discuss, I want to just make a couple points. I have been thinking about this the last couple of days when I, when I read in the newspaper that Prime Care was actually being considered again. I was shocked, and I was appalled. And I likened it to a woman who had finally, finally, finally gotten away from her abuser who had put her in the hospital time and time and time again with broken bones, bruises, brain bleeds. And she turns around after a year of physical rehabilitation, where she is able to walk out of the hospital healthy, and she returns to her abuser. That's what I liken this situation to, when I hear that Prime Care is being considered again. We also have to address the issue as to why Judge Evans did not recuse himself from a situation where, I understand, based on what I'm reading, he has a family connection to. So the point that I want to make very clearly is that I am opposed to these two companies, Prime Care and WellSpan, going into the prison, having an opportunity to provide so-called healthcare to our family members, our friends, our relatives in this community while they are housed in that, in that prison. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on to Directors and guests. Today, we have Dolphin County Solid Waste Management and Recycling, Kelly McGonigal. Kelly, welcome.
Good morning. Alright, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me today. I appreciate the opportunity to talk trash, specifically about household hazardous waste. I wanted to start out by just sharing examples of what household hazardous waste is. It is basically any item or chemical that you have in your home that might have a label on it that is considered hazardous. So it could be paint, motor oil, batteries, pool chemicals, driveway sealer, what have you. The issue is, they're labeled that way, but it's not a regulated waste, either in federally or in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So it's very confusing for our residents that want to do the right thing by disposing of them properly, but but our options are very limited, which is what, which was why I'm here today. So, back to the confusion. Can you just throw away your HHW? The simple answer is yes, if there is not a program available. And this slide here is taken directly from the DEP's, Department of Environmental Protection's website. And so the very first checkmark, it says, "You have read the label and complied with any disposal directions." I just referenced that, so it's confusing. If there's not a program available, and a resident wants to do the right thing, they call our department, and they're very passionate about it. They get angry with us that we don't have a program available. So I did some research, and I came up with some available options. Our current HHW program was initiated in nineteen ninety-nine with Curbside Incorporated. And at that time, our department was actually the Dauphin County Intermunicipal Solid Waste Authority. In the early two thousands, when we were, became a department rather than authority after the authority had been dissolved, Curbside was acquired by Waste Management Incorporated and became Waste Management at Your Door. Since 2022, since I went back to the department, we have shared information with our residents and to all the municipalities, which have shared the information either in their flyers or their website, which has drawn attention to the program. In all the years that I've been in the Waste Department, I've never seen this much interest. Just alone today, before I came out, we had three phone calls. So we're grateful for that, but we also need to find an available option for those residents. So the current program actually, in my opinion, is not a viable option anymore. So the numbers. As of July twenty twenty-four, there's an estimate of approximately one hundred and twenty-nine thousand households and a population estimate of two hundred and ninety-three thousand. Our current program only allows for twenty households per month. That's two hundred and forty annually. That equates to about point zero eight percent of our households within the county. It barely touches the surface. The other issue with the current program is that it is four hundred and twenty-six dollars per stop. So when a resident calls in and they have a tiny bit of driveway sealant in their container that they haven't used, and it's been sitting in their basement for five years, now they want to responsibly get rid of it, I started to explain to the residents, because it is their tax dollars, is it worth the four hundred and twenty-six dollars for us to come out there for that tiny bit when our waste goes to a waste energy facility, not a landfill? So there are some benefits to that, but it has to make sense financially as well with any waste management program. So if we were to offer that program to every household in the county, it would equate to about fifty-five million dollars a year. And that's not an option. The DEP does reimburse the county up to seventy-five thousand dollars a year, fifty percent of our total cost of the program. So either way, I just don't think the program's a viable option at this point. So what are, are our options? An annual drop-off event would be the safest program to have annually. It would allow folks time to gather their items, save it, get used to an annual event. The only issue is, if someone has passed away, the home is being cleaned out, or if someone's moving, there's not an immediate, again, there's not an immediate solution for that type of waste. The pros with the drop-off program is, I've already been in contact with the Department of Ag and have spoken to their chem-sweep representative, and we are eligible. So we would be able to include an additional seventeen thousand dollars towards a one-day drop-off, and then up to seventy-five thousand dollars by fifty percent reimbursement from the DEP. And again, the cons would, is really just residents moving impatience is a big one as well, and cleaning out homes. And then, these are a few examples of other counties in Pennsylvania that have one-day drop-off events and their flyers. You have Montgomery County, York County, and Center County. But there are actually very many counties throughout the state that host one-day events. And then this just gives you an example of the Act one ninety collection grant and the chem-sweep grant as well. And then, of course, in my dreams, this would be my ultimate recommendation, would be for a permanent facility like Lancaster County Solid Waste Authority has, but understanding we don't have the financial means like the authority does, this might not be a viable option to us, but maybe something to consider for the future. I did get, these are actual costs involved, from Lancaster County Solid Waste Authority that they shared with me. So it's approximately seven hundred thousand dollars a year to operate. That would include the infrastructure to, to build it.
Any revenues to help support the operation?
No.
Because, again, a lot of the operations fees and other annualized support that were given to your department have now gone away.
Yes. It's all gone away. And five hundred thousand dollars plus of a permanent HHW facility would be just disposal costs alone for the material. And then this is an example of Lancaster's facility up top. It's a drive-through facility. I can say it's top-notch. It's, it's amazing. And that's all I have. So I, I just would really ask that you take some consideration. We do receive twenty-plus calls a day on HHW. So there is definitely a public interest in the program, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I just thank you for your time.
Yeah, I have a couple.
Sure.
Obviously, what, what are there as it relates to options? You talked about what the biggest challenge is, is when people clean out.
Yes.
And you've got a number of local, local businesses that are haulers. Is there any arrangement to be able to provide, or even direction to Lancaster's facility? What's the cost? How do we serve the needs to ensure that these things don't end up in a yard in uptown Harrisburg in the backyard of somebody in Heissire? We obviously don't want to have not options for people that are trying to dispose of this appropriately.
Absolutely. I have been in, I've had conversations with Lancaster County Solid Waste Authority about this, and it, there may be a regional option down the road, where it makes sense similarly to the southeast region with Philly, Delaware, Chester, Montgomery, and Bucks. They collaboratively go out for RFP for their HHW program. They get better pricing. They host their events separately per county, but I do believe that they can cross, you know, like, if you can't make the Delaware one, you can go to the Chester one. That's, to my knowledge. But I am in conversation with them about something like that. I don't believe Lancaster County would allow us to use their facility in Lancaster, though.
Are there any other established HHWs in the region?
No.
Lancaster's the only option?
Lancaster is the only permanent facility. Other counties do have programs. And maybe something else we could consider, which I didn't include, and I do apologize, is offering a paid, you know, where, an option where the res is a shared cost. That could be an option. You know, a membership program. I, I don't know. But there, I could get creative with it.
I think that's what's going to be required, and it's not going to be done through, you know, our county alone. A lot of these issues related to how we solve them have got to be a partnership and, and a way that we can become creative, not only generate revenue, but even approaching the state and partners at DEP with a regional solution.
Yes.
So again, I, I would always prefer planning for options that would avoid environmental concerns and at least ensuring that we're having those conversations with neighboring municipalities rather than polluting our streams and other areas and backyards with pollutants that should otherwise be handled in a manner that would keep public safety and water quality as a priority.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For folks that don't know, Ms. McGonigal had worked for this department in the past. She had left the county and returned, and when Keith Epp retired, she replaced him as a ground running. So we appreciate what you have done.
Thank you.
And continue to do on our behalf. I think while we have you here, it'd be a great opportunity for you to tell folks also some of the other things that take place there. I know we have the drop-offs for shredded, taking tons of paper, recycled tires, we have that. Need to tell folks some of the things you do there. Also, also, I'm going to ask you about the illegal dumping that has been a major problem here in the county, specifically in the city of Harrisburg. I know we've been working with the district attorney and Magisterial District Justice on that. Can you give us an update on, on those things?
Yes. So our department operates the Dauphin County Recycling Center. And at the recycling center, we collect electronics that are prohibited from disposal under the Cover Device Recycling Act. A lot of folks get confused between electric and electronic, but we educate our residents every day, and it's just the... I, I can tell you, I, I find pride in that recycling center, knowing that we started out collecting e-waste on Cameron Street in an abandoned warehouse, and it took us three months to just load a tractor-trailer. So now we have this amazing drop-off facility that is busy all day long. So it's just, it's awesome to see that progression through it. At the recycling center, we also have, well, we collect styrofoam. We do free senior shredding, so if you are sixty or older, we do shredding for you for free so that... And if you are fifty-nine and younger, like myself, we do charge five dollars a box for confidential shred. And small businesses are, you know, permitted to use that as well. And we also accept scrap metal and just, well, I guess that would be it. And we also have eight drop-off sites throughout the county for your typical curbside material, cardboard, plastic, aluminum, and your newspaper. And then at our recycling center, the city of Harrisburg sponsors a glass recycling bin, which we're grateful for, and it gets utilized tremendously. And on top of that, our department also works with the Center for Employment Opportunities folks. So we have two crews every day that meet at our office, and they are our litter brigade. We have a bunch of names for them, but they're awesome. I went out with them two weeks ago, picking up litter on Seventeenth Street, and it's just... It's amazing. I mean, they're, it's not the, necessarily the illegal dumping, but just the litter, cigarettes and paper, you know, it's just incredible what they do. But they also pick up, you know, the occasional car part and such. So anyway, they do really awesome for us. This year, I believe that there are approximately twenty tons already collected, and they, the crews have a wager with one another who can collect more bags of trash every day. So that program is going very well. In fact, Kia Hansard and I will be coming before you pretty soon, once I get my agenda for that as well. And as far as illegal dumping goes, we had our first citation this year, thanks to Councilman Rodriguez. I guess, being at one site while someone was actually illegal dumping, and then our enforcement officer, along with the city, was able to successfully get indicted him. So, or, you know, not indict him, but it was a successful charge him, yes. And Judge Uridia is amazing. And a lot of folks may not know that our department also has environmental court assigned us through Judge Uridia. So any illegal dumping citations that go through our office go directly to him.
And for the first time in history, a couple of years ago, teamed up with the city of Harrisburg and created a position. So we have an employee who works with the city in the city to specifically go after illegal dumping.
That is correct. We have one environmental enforcement officer that directly works with the city of Harrisburg, and the other is responsible for the other thirty-nine municipalities.
Kelly, thank you for all your work on this, and thanks for coming and bringing us this presentation. My only question is, the action, like, required by us today or desired by us to, to start kind of considering is maybe like a one-day drop-off that we would publicize really well, get out in the community, and kind of actively, hopefully, bring together a lot of this waste that falls under, you know, these categories, and doing that at a location hopefully accessible to, to many within Dauphin County, where, where then we could dispose of it properly, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I've already been in contact with HAC. It's been a while, but that would be the ideal location.
Certainly.
But yes, that's what I would like you to consider, the one-day drop-off. And until we can come up with a regional solution that benefits everyone.
Great. Well, we will take that under consideration, and I get back to you. Appreciate you taking the time to bring us this information.
Thank you, Kelly.
Well, that might be a first.
Kelly's got a fan club. All right. Next up, we have the Dauphin County Conservation District.
Thank you, young man.
Matthew Warel and Robert Kristoff.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is this working?
Yeah, it should be working.
Okay. I'm here to talk about the Dauphin County NPDS MS4 permit. An annual report that we give to the commissioners. To give you a little background, Dauphin County has been subject to an NPDS MS4 permit. That's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. That's a federal permitting system administered by EPA. And then in Commonwealth, it's administered by DEP. It applies to municipal separate stormwater systems. So falling under that, that designation, the county is required to obtain a permit and then implement a program to address the permit requirements, which are public education, public participation, illicit discharge elimination, construction site stormwater management, post-construction stormwater management, and pollution prevention, and good housekeeping at municipal facilities. This started in two thousand and three, and way back then, the county commissioners designated Conservation District to, to ensure permit compliance. Been doing that ever since. The purpose of today's presentation is to annually keep the commissioners up to date on anything that needs to be brought to your attention with the program, some of the highlights of the previous year, and anything expected in the next permit year. Also to provide for any public input that might be desired by the public, and also meet permit requirements. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five permit year ends until June thirtieth, and we start another permit year. Some of the highlights on those requirements: Public education and outreach. We do distribute an electronic newsletter to all county employees once a year. Place an educational newspaper ad in the newspaper. Distribute educational materials through private and public schools every year. And last year, we participated in seven homeowner workshops with seven, actually eight municipalities. Dairy Township, London Dairy Township, Lower Paxton Township, Lower Swatera Township, South Anneover Township, Sesquik County Township, Swatera Township, and Paxton County Borough had a combined workshop. At that workshop, homeowners are educated on things they can do around the house to prevent pollution. They also receive free rain. Last year, we had a total of two hundred participants that attended those workshops. As far as public involvement goes, annually, we get, or throughout the year, we get reports from while late. They do monthly cleanups, volunteer cleanups. So during that permit year, that's a total of one hundred and sixteen volunteers that clean up. The illicit discharge detection elimination, there's not a whole lot to talk about there. We do screen the regulated county facilities periodically. That involves going out to see if there's any pollutants coming out of the storm sewers during dry weather. Construction site stormwater management, post-construction stormwater management, they're related, and that pertains primarily to the construction site permitting under NPDS. Actually, the, all of the county... of the counties and all the municipalities in Dolphin County receive compliance credit for all of the construction site requirements and some post-construction requirements by having Conservation District implement the Chapter one oh two and NPDS erosion set control, so that qualifies that way. Then the pollution prevention and good housekeeping at regulated facilities. We have prepared a, basically, a good housekeeping plan for fourteen regulated facilities, and we conduct storm sewer system inspections annually in November for all those. And we do provide training materials annually for all the employees actually throughout the county. Coming up next year, the permit is actually ended, but we are in the midst of what they call administrative extension. We're not sure when the new permit will come out. We don't really anticipate a whole lot of changes when it does. But of course, through these reports, you'll be brought up if there's anything. As far as future outreach goes, we do have six more rain barrel workshops scheduled for Dairy, London Dairy, Sescrana, Lower Paxton, Swatara Township, Paxton, and Anneover Borough. Public input is always welcome. If you have any interest in providing public input, you can contact me at Conservation District. Any of the reports, documents, things like that, they're all available there for public. And that is that. Be happy to answer any questions. And I will be expecting applause as well.
Yeah, we'll be expecting applause for sure. Yeah. Commissioner Hartwig, any questions?
Bob, you're very informative. Maybe a little dry, but you're always very informative. But that's what, that was a pun on stormwater. I actually have a new issue that I want to discuss with you. First of all, thank you for the work that you continue to do, stormwater piece, and for your staff that are here. I know we've got some fully engaged and extraordinarily competent staff in the Conservation District. I know as I've come up and visited, I would be remiss to say we are not extremely well equipped with some very motivated and passionate folks that are committed to the programs that we are responsible for running, and they do one heck of a job in being able to administer those programs and ensure that we're meeting full compliance. So I want to thank you and the staff for all you do. I was in a meeting, and I've been a part of a couple of statewide conversations related to the idling of Cleveland Cliffs. I know I contacted Director Nagurski about the idea of stagnant water in the canals. And, you know, there's a couple of things to this idling issue. I want to make sure we're communicating with the Conservation District about it. I know, again, we're having statewide conversations. Department of Energy and DEP has certain parameters related to the idling of this plant that have me a bit concerned. And one of the issues is the flow and the continued pumping of the canal that is on Front Street and runs through the operations. And to ensure that, number one, it doesn't cause additional backup concerns and level concerns that could cause Front Street and Stilton to flood, absent the ability to run those pumping stations, and to ensure DEP through this idling plan is ensuring that there's not also going to be any environmental contamination that occurs as a result of any backflow of water that may occur with additional rainfall back into the river of any environmentally contaminated waters. I know it also has a detrimental and significant impact on one of the neighbors who was an unintended consequence of this deriband, who quite frankly is in a very unenviable position right now of relying on both energy sources and water to continue their pipe making operation, as well as, they're not choosing to idle. They still have an active business and unfortunately fully rely on the type of steel that is going to be, I guess, fourteen foot flat steel that is used to be able to make the pipes in their operation. So just an eye on the issue. And one of the things that I committed our department to, and I asked Eric to do, is get in touch with the borough to ensure that we are, at least from the spraying mosquitoes and fly up there, stagnant water, keeping a monitoring of that situation, and, you know, keeping us up to speed on anything from our level that we can do to help mitigate those concerns. We're not in control of the DEP piece. I know there's other business concerns. We are actively lobbying on the federal and state level to try to assist both deriband and the employees down there. But from the Conservation District perspective, just to ensure you've got a handle on those issues. Thank you.
Before I go, I want to point out one thing. As you guys know, a lot of municipalities have adopted storm water, storm water management fees. The implementation of this program, in fact, we have an NPDS permit, actually gets us a fifty percent discount on some of the fees in primarily this Swatara Township, most of our facilities are located there. So there is, there's, other than, you know, the thrilling aspect of how you do this recording, there's other.
You know, I was just kidding about it.
Commissioner, please.
Yeah, Bob, I want to thank you and Matt, Eric, and your team for the professional service that you continue to provide for our residents. You're a top notch organization. I do have a question based upon, under item three for the summary in the public education and outreach, you list eight municipalities. The last two are combined, Swatara and Paxton. But we have forty municipalities in Dolphin County. So if someone were to ask, why are only eight listed here? Is it because others aren't participating, or what's the reason?
That's correct. This is open to any municipalities. The driving force for a lot of municipalities, you see they're all pretty much the southern municipalities, is they're also subject to four requirements. So that rain barrel workshop, you know, it's a public outreach item for them, and a lot of the residents, you know, talking about storm water fees, in some cases you have to look at specifics of the municipality, but some of them do offer those residents a discount on their storm water utility fees for having rain barrels.
If a resident from the city of Harrisburg, say, wants to have a rain barrel, how would they go about doing it?
Contact Matt, and Matt will put that in motion and see if you can, you know, get something.
And how do they contact you? Because I can tell you, a lot of people from the city listen into our meetings or gets around, and they have asked me before about this topic. So if you can answer it right now for them.
Yeah, so I guess to go back, we do send out a letter about the rain barrel program to every municipality in the MS4 area, which is generally in the southern, where the most of development is, and that will be of benefit. If you would be interested in participating in the rain barrel workshops and outside of an area that we're hosting, I would suggest you contact Conservation District, and I will put you on the list. That can be in contact with the municipality that you're closest to, and see if they'll accept you to a workshop being an outside resident of the municipality. And if not, we have extras if it isn't picked up. You'd be able to be on that listing, free rainbow, and experience some of those benefits from getting that. We receive rain barrels from a couple of different sources, get a grant from DEP. We match that, and then also receive small bits from municipalities. That'd be the best way to get, contact the rain barrel workshop, actually, to benefit from that.
Thank you, Matt. Folks at home, you've asked, he just answered it. Take advantage of it.
Matt, do you mind sharing your email? Just if someone's listening and they want to email you, do you mind sharing?
Sure. So if you can contact me at M W E H R L E at dolphincounty.com. My name's Matt.
Thank you.
For the Conservation District, seven one seven nine two eight one zero zero.
Great. Thank you for including that. I saw the thought bubble in your head, like, our phones might ring off the hook now.
How many rain barrels do you have?
Right now, last year, the supplier that we get them from, they're in Raleigh, North Carolina, you order them in thirty-three barrel pallets, and we got two hundred and thirty-one of them, and I anticipate ordering about the same this year.
Great. Really cool. Well, thank you both for this. And I'm going to start the clap while you guys get up.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right. Next up, we have the Hummels Town Criterium and Street Fair. Megan Bartow.
Commissioner, didn't you just participate in that?
I did not participate in this. I participated in a different bike.
Okay.
But I plan on being at this. This is going to be really great.
I saw, okay, this one coming up. You didn't do the one last year.
Yep, yep, July twelfth.
You did the one that was here in the city, right?
Yep, yep. The green belt.
Are you, you're going to be neck down?
I don't know if I'm going to be riding.
Your, we'll see. Your bike shirt, your bike shorts, kind of thing?
Free entry, free entry, this guy.
Morning.
My name's Megan Bartow. I reside in Lower Paxton Township, downtown Hummels Town. And good morning, commissioners. I am a longtime listener, first time caller. Here officially at the meeting. And I would like to thank you, first of all, for your support of what we like to call the fastest day in Central PA. Because if any of you don't know, Bicycle Criterium is a short race. The course is in Hummels Town. It's a mile long. So the entry level category is beginners. So Commissioner Hartwig, you can sign up and race the course. You don't need anything special. You need a bike and a helmet.
Is that a challenge?
Yes, actually it is.
I'm in, I'm in.
I suggest elbow pads and knee pads, too, George.
I'm in.
There's also, which I'll get to, there's also a family race course experience, which anyone can do. They just need to sign a waiver and wear a helmet. But that invites the public to ride on the same course that the pros ride on. Really want to get the community involved. But the Criterium is, it's one mile course through Hummels Town, and it goes for thirty minutes would be the beginner. So you only got a VO2 max effort for thirty minutes. That's it. It's not terrible. Now, the pros would be more like now, which is pretty, pretty intense. So, but we invite everyone to come out and see it. We also have a craft fair. We have twenty-five, and these are local artisans. You know, we may have people that, I make tumblers in my basement, or I make soap, and we may have people that apply from all over the area. Well, we give priority to Dolphin County residents to display their crafts at the craft fair. We want to make sure that the local is represented. And I call it a craft fair. There's a lot of other ones, like we have the Downtown Arts Fest, and that's the Arts Fest, which is huge. And you're going to go there, and you're going to buy a five hundred dollar painting for your living room. That's not what we want. We want manageable, very well priced items that everybody can enjoy the experience. And then we also have food trucks. Who doesn't love food trucks? I'm sure you guys recognize some of these names on here. So, and you might see, we also have JP Winery and Rubber Soul Brewing are coming to. Now, they're not food trucks, but, I mean, they're just as important, you know, hydration on a hot, hot July day. So we like to offer that. And then, since this is a bicycle race, it's also sanctioned by USA Cycling, which is the governing body of bicycling and bicycle racing and Olympic developmental trading programs in the United States. So we do have official officials, and they, it's a contest, and they get upgrade points, and they can move on. And we have some pros that come to the event, and we have some Olympians that come to the event. So it's really exciting that everyone comes to Dolphin County. And then just, this is our fifth year doing it, fifth year. And you guys, as commissioners, have supported for three, and as I said, we are completely grateful for it. But over those five years, we have had seven hundred and eighty different individual racers come. They age thirteen, and this doesn't even count the kids' race. This is thirteen year old that lined up, raced for prizes, and potentially money if they're old enough. We had an eighty year old race, and we do have a sixty-five plus category. So it's really nice to see just the varied of age range that people who do this event. And then two hundred and seventy different teams. So there's, there's teams in the area. So our Dolphin County, our Hummels Town name is getting out to all across the country, nineteen different states, four different countries. And then next, this is actually a map, just that I put together real quick, of where participants have come from. And this doesn't count attendees, like the general population of public that came to the event. This is just bicycle racers. So as you can see, they definitely come from farther away than just Dolphin County. So it's great that they can see everything that our county has to offer, and they, obviously, they spend money while they're here. They stay in hotels, because you're not coming from Colorado and not staying overnight.
I'm glad you said that, because that's a pet peeve of this board for tourism grant dollars. This is heads in beds, heads on beds. And that's what the dollars are supposed to go to.
Yeah.
That's what you do. You bring them in from all over the country. They stay here, and they spend the money here. Thank you.
Correct. That's, that's the point, right? You're not coming from South Carolina and not staying overnight. You're finding an Airbnb, a hotel, something to stay at. And then, obviously, thank you, Dolphin County. We appreciate your support. We also do like to give back to the community. On our website, we have an entire page just devoted to nonprofits that we have contributed to. They range from Boy Scout troops to other, as Commissioner Douglas knows, we were at the Tour de Belt that happened a couple of weeks ago, and we ran the audio and all of the logistics and safety stuff for that. This year, we are giving back to the Hummels Town Historical Society. Last year, it was the Hummels Town Food Bank, and the year before, it was the Hummels Town Fire Department. So we like to pick a local nonprofit each year to donate a portion of the proceeds back to, to keep the money in the community and to keep those nonprofits that really need the help ready to go. And as far as, we want to encourage fitness. That's really what it is, right? Put your phone down, put your iPad down, throw it on the floor, get outside, enjoy the light, enjoy the nice air, walk around with your family and your friends, enjoy Dolphin County. And then, obviously, bring money to the area. There's a kids' race. It's free. Family race course experience is free. And I did hear Commissioner Douglas raced in college. I don't know if that's a rumor, or it can confirm, but one of these years, I promise I'm going to get him to pin on a number and at least line up. And if anyone's curious, the average speed that these racers race is, the pros, is thirty-one miles an hour for one race around Hummels Town. And if you haven't seen the route, there's eight turns. So it's not just straight, it's not a straight air, right? It's thirty-one miles an hour average, which is, so it's fun to watch, especially when they come down the final. So.
Well, I guess I'm signed up. Challenge me, and I'm in. I'm looking at Jennifer, making sure the twelfth is clear. I know I've come and viewed the event already, and I know we've been supporters, but I guess you got me as a participant. So we'll start slowly.
You could lead the family race course experience.
There you go.
You're all welcome to come, say a couple of words ahead of time, and jump.
I appreciate your passion and willingness to, obviously, to highlight Hummels Town, which has a significant amount of offerings. I think it's such a unique town, and the idea of being able to support local businesses and the spin off of this event, I think, you know, you're carefully considering how you are able to maximize the people that come into town to ensure local businesses also benefit as a result, and to make it grow each and every year. You got at least one participant will be there and sign up. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for everything that you're doing. I couldn't help but I looked at the food truck festival and noticed Rubber Soul Brewing. They're a great local business there in Hummels Town, the Van Gavries, and then Geo Smoke and Grill.
They have everything.
Great food, and they also do the Hershey New Year's event. So I usually go there every time and make sure I get a sandwich or something. Geo Smoke and Grill.
You'll be there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to highlight the last slide, just so the public knows. This is July twelfth this year, nine AM to four PM. Come by at any time, I guess. It's obviously free to attend, so the public to attend and watch something really interesting happening in our region that is bringing people together. And, you know, also, obviously, the street fair portion of it, grab some food. But then just, if you've never seen a bike race before, this is a free opportunity to come see it right here in our local community. It's also just really cool to see kind of Hummels Town shut down, like the streets shut down. It's kind of like you get to walk in the streets. You get to kind of like, you know, experience the borough a little bit different than on a typical day. And I just think it's a really cool, interesting event compared to many of the other events happening throughout the county in the summer. This is a great opportunity for anybody interested. Maybe I'll be there on my bike. I don't.
The kids' events are at noon. So the kids' race starts at noon.
Okay, great.
Then the family race course is at twelve thirty, and then the fastest race is happening at half.
Awesome. I have a question. For the fastest race, do you have people lined up handing out water as they go by? Because when I watch it on TV, they're coming by at like forty miles an hour, and they're grabbing water. It's flying in the air. Sometimes they get it, sometimes they don't.
Are you asking to sign up?
Well, I might. That would be fun. That'd be fun.
Just wear a bright colored shirt so they can find you. That's actually, that's.
The reason I say that, the county insurance carrier does not want me on a bicycle.
You wouldn't be. You'd be standing there. You'd be fine.
Well, that's why, that's why George can ride. I'm going to hand out water.
Hand it in the bottle. That's perfect. Last year, for the pro race, which was an hour long, we did have, they call it a hand up station, or a feed zone. And because it was a hundred and three degrees last year, even hotter on the tarmac, the USA Cycling officials, who, we're the race directors, but when the race starts, we don't have any say in the race at all. It's up to the USA Cycling officials. That's why they pass all the officials' tests. And he said, because of the extreme heat of it being a hundred and two degrees for the rider's safety, we are going to offer a feed zone where they can get water. And it's usually between a certain number of laps. And we were at a race this past weekend at Smoketown Airport in Lancaster, and also helping out the event, and they did the exact same thing. So it's, if it's hot, and if it's deemed, and these officials have been doing it for thirty, so they, they're pretty good with knowing if they're going to need it. And they offer the feed zone. And if the riders take it, they take it. If they don't, they probably get a little thirsty. So.
Well, thank you for all you're doing. This is a great opportunity to kind of highlight the value. This is a great opportunity to kind of highlight the value of tourism and the tourism dollars that go out to support efforts like this, bringing in, like, like we said, heads in beds and economic growth to a region of our county. So thank you both for all your work, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's clap, let's clap. I like this, we're starting. All right, next up, we have Human Resources, Cassie Ruschinsky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, for the Personnel Packet, there's some items that need to be voted on. Items twenty-one through twenty-nine and forty-eight.
I'll make a motion to approve items twenty-one through twenty-nine and forty-eight, and I will note they were all located at prison.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope, all right, thank you. Director of Budget and Finance, Chris Davis.
Just have a couple of comments on the purchase order packet for you. The first item is to change to one-three-one-five and one-three-two-six are the two items that were tabled in last week's packet. And we will have one addition that I will distribute that was, we added with oversight approval for the ten-ninety-five C processing for this year. I'm sure that order invoice gets paid to the Harris Corporation.
That's a double question, talked about yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, I did get information on the one that I had sent out to the board, so if you have any further questions from that, please, certainly let me know. And I'll get you whatever information you need. Any other questions with the purchase order packet?
The purchase order packet is not before us for approval, it's just before us for review for approval next week, correct?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be ready for your, your vote and approval next week.
So I would just, I guess, request that any questions that the commissioners have about the purchase order packet, try to get those resolved prior to next week. We also have before us the adoption of fiscal year budget.
I will start, there is no changes to the budget that I have brought forth for your approval. I have received no questions, comments, concerns, or correspondence from any of the public regarding the budget. And just as a reminder, a reminder review, the twenty-six budget that's being presented for approval, there is an increase overall for all of the human service agencies of nine point six million or seven point nine-five percent. That equates to a two point one billion increase in county funds or fourteen point six-six percent. The majority is within our Children and Youth Department, which is also the, by far the largest budget in the cycle.
Do I have a motion for approval or adoption of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six fiscal year budget?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hartwick, second by Commissioner Priest, any discussion?
Yes, oh, good.
I, I just wanted to note that while those are the numbers that we've set, this is a annualized, you know, we, we should be in all departments looking at the budget the moment they're approved and being able to manage those budgets to ensure that we have the least impact on the county general fund. Because we have committed these dollars, doesn't mean that that's necessarily what we will spend in our reconciliation at the end of the year. So the goal is, while this is the budget that's set, we hope that it is not the budget that ultimately will be needed from the county share to be able to operate efficiently our human service agency. So just want to make that.
Commissioner Priest?
Yes, for the public's clarification, netification, you just advise what we're voting on today compared to the general budget.
So this is, as we call it, the fiscal year budget, and these are our human service agencies. So aging, children and youth, drug and alcohol, mental health, autism, developmental programs, human services, and the hazmat team. These departments run on a fiscal year from July first through June thirtieth, which aligns with the state fiscal year, because the majority is funded by state federal programs. So this lines up with that compared to the general fund budget and a few others, which run on a calendar year of January first through July first, which run with the county taxing bill cycle, the real estate.
And again, we probably will not have a state budget in place. Well, we, we definitely will not have a state budget in place, so the continued resolution and flat funding is also something we've got to mind.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning commissioners, we have several items on today's agenda requiring board action. Four general human services agreements, one general children and youth agreement, an addendum to the memorandum of understanding between Dauphin County and Visit Hershey and Harrisburg, and a corresponding one million dollar tourism grant for Visit Hershey and Harrisburg, confirmation that the Board of Commissioners will consider all proposals and supporting documentation from the respondents to the prison board's jail healthcare services RFP, and an asbestos inspection agreement. We also have the final four human service contracts that relate to the start of the state's new fiscal year that Chris was just referring to, that begins on July first. So I want to take a moment to recognize some of the folks who worked really hard to successfully complete these agreements. When I joined the county a few months ago, one of the first things I, I heard from everyone was that an immediate challenge we were facing was the need to finalize hundreds of these human service contracts. Otherwise, really essential services our residents rely on would be interrupted at the end of the state's fiscal year in June. So this represented an enormous amount of work, resulted in the completion of three hundred and twenty-six unique human service agreements in just a couple of months, completed one week ahead of schedule. So really appreciate everyone's work, in particular, this could not have happened, of course, without Randy Eggers' leadership. Everyone in our Solicitor's Office, especially Kelly, as well as Kim, Stacy, Tabita, Bridget from Children and Youth, Andrea and Mike from Mental Health Autism and Developmental Programs, Kristen and Brittany from Drug and Alcohol Services, Ben and Sally from our Area Agency on Aging, April from Human Services, and of course Casey Crown, who helped coordinate hundreds of these contracts across a variety of agencies. So I wanted to express a heartfelt thanks to everyone who helped make this happen. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Haggerty?
That's a great employee, just.
Mr. Owens for the Solicitor's Report.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions for Mr. Owens? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Training Packet, we have one item on the Training Packet requiring action today, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hartwick, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And our matters requiring board action, we'll continue to take them header by header, begin with items one through eight under General Items Header.
I'll make a motion to approve items one through eight under General Items.
You have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hartwick, any discussion?
I just would ask on item number seven, what action are we taking?
My understanding is that this action is formal confirmation on the part of the board that you intend to consider all proposals relating to the prison board's jail healthcare services IR, RFP, not, without limiting yourself to the two recommendations from the board itself.
What was this action required to do then?
My understanding is that, no, this is not legally required in order for you to consider all proposals.
Then, we, we, we sort of gave that direction yesterday. The, from our feedback, we, that's how we'll be proceeding. So really, this action is not a legally required action.
Correct.
Just want to make that clear.
For me, I think it's incredibly valuable that this board shows that we are willing to consider all. And certainly, we could do that behind the scenes, from a legal perspective, we could consider all. But I think the public deserves the transparency to know that we will consider all vendors and all the supporting documentation as we make our decision on this. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Tourism Grant twenty-twenty-five, number nine. Undertain a motion for item number nine.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, second by Commissioner Priest, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Items ten through twelve, under the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six state fiscal year contracts for human services, mental health, autism, and developmental programs. By the motion, items ten through twelve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. On our final item, item thirteen, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six state fiscal year contracts for human services, Area Agency on Aging, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Former business? Seeing no former business, Commissioner comments? We begin with Commissioner Hartwick.
Just a, a couple of updates. First is, this week I consider almost Volunteer Week for Dauphin County, and it's the recognition of a component to Dauphin County that is such a valuable piece to the things that we do in public service. One of the things we don't recognize is how many committed volunteers that this county has at various levels to be able to ensure that we can provide a level of service, and they do it, as we heard from Mr. Graybill earlier. They do it because they are engaged and they want to make a difference. I just wanted to take an opportunity to recognize those county volunteers. And last night, there were an indication that in our Parks and Rec Department, we have two hundred and seventy-five volunteers with Wildwood, with Fort Hunter, the new Friends of Detweiler, and for a number of events that they have in the number one Parks and Rec Department in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It wouldn't happen without the dedicated volunteers, who, by the way, last year, on the private side, they raised around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars financially outside of general fund tax, tax dollars. And if you would equate their volunteer hours, it was another three hundred and fifty thousand in, in volunteer hours, which is, you know, a significant amount of money to be able to contribute to the well-being and the lives of, and the betterment of Dauphin County. So their, their efforts on those regards need to be recognized, and I, I want to make sure I say thank you and congratulations to the ones who received pins for five, ten, fifteen, and yes, there were twenty-five-year volunteers last night that were recognized that have been a part of our system and, and really doing that with a level without recognition for years to sustain a very viable and great group of gems in our park system. We also have tomorrow a volunteer recognition event for our seniors. We have over nine hundred volunteers, including Mr. Graybill, that do Meals on Wheels. They do our Amts Budman Program, they do our community transportation for our senior citizens. And they also do the Medi Program, which many of you may or may not know, in Pennsylvania, particularly now with Medicaid choices being flooded to senior citizens. Oftentimes, people get confused, they don't know who to choose, they're hearing from providers. Our Area Agency on Aging acts as sort of independent consultants and takes a look and does an assessment based upon somebody's current situation, health needs, and what they need to be able to sustain their current level of life with their income levels. And they make some recommendations related to the types of plans that would best suit our seniors, which is a truly valuable commodity. And we have actually volunteers that have done that significantly, that have put in over four hundred contacts last year with people that have requested that with only four volunteers. So that is a significant effort. I know Shannon Valier runs the program generally from the county side, but we could not do what we do without our volunteers. We will be having a volunteer recognition event for folks tomorrow in Stilton, and we look forward to being able to say thank you in person. I hope the heat dies out a little bit as we recognize all of the individuals that have given so much of their personal and valued time to, to the residents of our county. I also spent this week, I, many of you know, I've done every job in county government, we're back in the actual, if my dad, if my dad says, my, my dad always said, if you just understood, the Lehigh Engineers understood what the steelworkers did at the mill, maybe they would not be closing it down and they'd be turning a profit. It doesn't often work the way you want to have it work in a textbook. And one of the things I know is being able to see firsthand, and things have changed. Times always change, and I think the smartest people I know know they always have a lot to learn. And seeing it from the view of our firsthand employees is something that we are engaged in a process of continuing to do. We did it actually on Monday with our Protective Services Unit, where we interviewed somebody in Hershey that had some current issues with, we can't disclose the concerns, but they were a willing participant. We also listened in to a resident meeting that happened at Oak Hill, where they, they were informing seniors of their rights and ensuring that those rights were being met, and they also were providing staff trainings, which needed to be stepped up on based upon the hotline in the corner who knew everything that was going on in Oak Hill. And, and also assessments that were done later in the afternoon in Lower Paxton Township. So I want to thank the employees for the opportunity to join them and to learn some of their current challenges and know that as we learn, we can be better guided and better informed as we make decisions from this board to determine, number one, what is it you need to do a better job, how can we best support you? And even from the residents, we work for them, not the other way around. And it was pretty clear that our staff felt that same level of compassion and concern and treated people with the utmost respect. So, thank you, that ends my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of things, first, I want to thank our three presenters today. Kelly Magano for Solid Waste Management Recycling, the Dauphin County Conservation District, and the folks from the Hummels Town Criterion and Street Fair. I will note for the record that today was a record, we received not only one, not two, but three appallses after the presentations. Mr. Graybill, thank you for kicking that off. Also, George, I joined you last night, and our Chief of Staff, Mr. Haggerty, at the Volunteer Appreciation Dinner for Parks and Rec. And folks, they have nine hundred thousand people come to our park system each year. So it's being used, and without our volunteers and the great work that the staff do, we wouldn't be able to provide those services to them. So it was great to be there last night. And I will say, they made the right decision by moving it indoors into the air conditioning at the Fort Hunter barn, and the food by CNJ Catering was excellent as well. And, and lastly, if you see our police fire and EMS out there, it is hot out there. But we're at a meeting like this, or home watching TV, and that alarm goes off, we're still at a meeting like this, or home watching TV, and they're responding within a moment's notice to assist our residents in their time of greatest need. So I want to thank them for their dedication and service to the community.
And, and I appreciate the chairman's willingness. I also wanted to just quickly mention, one of the most important things that have happened to our office, we have been joined by Jennifer Smallwood, who is our, our new partner in my office to be able to better serve the residents of this county. She brings a wealth of experience from both the Harrisburg School Board, her experience running departments. I think she ran two departments at PHFA and oversaw and managed a number of employees, and has brought a level of expertise, passion to serve, and a commitment and roots in this community that will be valuable as we figure out the best way to serve our residents moving forward. So welcome, Jennifer, and thank you for joining us.
Welcome, Jennifer. Is there anything else, just want to make sure, okay. First, I want to just recognize that last week, we had our press conference for World Refugee Day, and it went really well. We had quite a few individuals attend that, also celebrating Immigrant Heritage Month. I just want to thank all the partners in the region that do refugee resettlement, it's really hard work. It's really laboring work to, to, to bring somebody into the region who has no, maybe cultural context for what they're stepping into, and to be the person who guides them into housing, into opportunity. It, it's pretty amazing to, to meet with these people and see the responsibility that falls on their shoulders to, to aid these families, and then often the work they're doing under-resourced, and, and now even more so under-resourced than ever before. So I'm just incredibly thankful for, for all the entities that come together and do that work. Last week, we saw a number of amazing Juneteenth events, I got to participate in many of them. I just want to obviously thank young professionals of color and their leadership for all the ways in which they planned those events, put those together, brought the community together. Instead of making Juneteenth one-day celebration, they made it a whole week of celebrations. And I think that's really important, just because for some people, Juneteenth might not be a day that they're able to get off work and come to an event. And so the ability for people to, you know, find the event that works with their schedule and to participate and to celebrate and to really learn history. I mean, growing up, I knew nothing about Juneteenth, no one taught me about Juneteenth, no one told me what that day meant. That was not something that, that, that I was taught growing up i- in any, in any way. And, and I think it's great to see that my kids are, are going to grow up knowing what Juneteenth is, going and actually having memories of celebrating it. And I think as we continue to champion. And I think as we continue to champion freedom and justice in our world, opportunities like that for us to gather and to celebrate, that's the way that we bring people together and the way that we move forward, and so I'm thankful for all of their work. I also want to reference, you know, last night I wasn't able to attend the volunteers' gathering for Parks and Rec, but I'm incredibly thankful for all the volunteers that make Dolphin County continue to move forward, and especially in our Parks and Rec, because there's so many opportunities for volunteers to get involved. And I believe tomorrow, we're celebrating our aging volunteers, people who volunteer with our aging department, and just want to say, I'm not going to be able to make that one either. I will be out of town, but excited to celebrate them, excited for these appreciation opportunities that we have. In relation to aging, we also opened cooling stations this week. You can find out more about that on our, on our Facebook. We posted that. We also released some press releases, so it's probably in the press as well, if you want to look into where those are located, but we want to make sure that anyone in need of a cooling station, maybe your power goes out, or your air conditioner's out, you know, you need that, that you have options for that. Finally, just a note, our gaming advisory board for our local share gaming cycle is opening on July first. So July first, we will be opening the gaming grant application process. There will be pre-application meetings, July one through August twenty-ninth. They're doing group application processes. This is just a way of making things more efficient. So you can find all that information out when it gets posted on July first on our website, under Economic Development, I believe it'll be there. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to my office and we'll make sure, or the Chief Clerk's office, and we'll make sure to direct you in the appropriate manner for gaming. Moving on to correspondence. As we look at correspondence, we have fourteen items of correspondence, range of correspondence this week, per usual. I'll direct the Chief Clerk's office to receive and distribute correspondence appropriately. I want to note that item number one under correspondence is a cease and desist, public defamation and notice of claim letter addressed to me from a lawyer representing Michael Musser II. I have copies of my fan mail available for anyone for the purposes of transparency, if anyone would like to review today, after today's meeting. We'll move on to public participation. Anyone for public? Well, we got a list, that's right. Okay. Okay, all right. If any of you, some of you may have actually signed up for this at the beginning of public participation, but if you would like to come up, you're welcome to, or you can pass. Pamela Parsons.
Again, good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Hagerty, Mr. Owens, Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. Today was a pretty important meeting in a lot of ways, and one is that there were a lot of people here making comments about a particular agenda item. Also, at one point, there were eighty-nine people watching online today. So people are paying attention. At the last prison board meeting, there were actually eighty-six people who joined virtually, and I kind of just keep track of those, and that was a record. So people in Dolphin County care, as all of you have shared this morning about volunteers with the Department of Aging, with Parks and Recreation, with all the sorts of things that keep this county running. People care, and most people want to be engaged. They want good government that works for everyone, not just paid consultants, not just special interests, not just juicy auto-renew, no bid, no show contracts. People want the county to work for everyone. So I bring your attention to the fact that Facebook, where you are now live streaming this, gets rid of the videos after thirty days. So I would like to encourage you to move to YouTube, where they are available all the time. Yes, this is a new thing. I saw your face. This is a new thing. Videos are removed after thirty days. So in, in order to maintain transparency, I think it would be a good idea to move to YouTube, to stream them on YouTube, and then someone who is not available to be here or to watch them live can easily access them and watch them later. It's transparency, it's accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. We'll look into that. That's certainly concerning if they, if they're auto-deleted. Next up, I have Laura Harding.
Hi, Laura Harding, Uptown Harrisburg. Just to add on to what Pam said about the videos, it's come to my attention that the prison board is livestreamed, but those videos aren't recorded and made available to the public, so I would ask that those videos also be moved to YouTube and so the public can review them who aren't able to live, watch the livestream. Regarding the auto-renew contracts, these are called Evergreen contracts, and they're banned federally, so no federal contracts are able to be auto-renewed. And while Pennsylvania does not explicitly ban Evergreen contracts in procurement, you are able to pass that regulation yourselves. In Pennsylvania, you can't make a law less stringent, but you can make it more stringent. So I would ask that you formally in writing, put that to writing, that you will ban Evergreen contracts in Dolphin County. And again, I'd like to reiterate that a request should be made, well, it's being made by me now, but a request should be made from the Commissioners that President Evans delete the president judge from the prison board, and because of his conflict of interest that, or possible conflict of interest, that his, any decision he makes to replace himself with another member of the Court of Common, please, you know, there would be questions raised by that, as to, you know, why that person was selected. So again, also, please add three to four residents to the prison board and obtain training from the Pennsylvania Department of General Services for all members of staff who are involved in the procurement processes, to include RFP reviews and members of the team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Megan Barto, I believe is not here anymore. I think some people signed up at the start, and we're assuming. Antonio Foster.
Antonio Foster, five, nine, four, Chambers Street. Over the last month, I've been down here, I made claims of police corruption, and also, you know, actions and claims that, you know, have just been against the community altogether. Since this is happening, nothing has been done about it. Nothing has been, nothing has been done about it. I've given information that's undeniable, that can't be denied. Today, I'm going to mention some names and some people that the O.S.C.O. chose off that police corruption. Kenyatta Henry, it's gotten so bad to the point that he owns the cops. He can get caught on state parole, and are on parole, y'all still have to let him out. Going on another person also, David Glad, was allowed, he owned the police so much, knew so much information on him, that they, that they had to keep that in him out, to the point that he got federally indicted. So all this is things that can be checked on. Also, I'm not for sure on this one, but I think also Andre Smith, he was just on parole, if I'm not mistaken, and he was released. So I know there's this thing in the system called parole detainer, and when you get a charge, there's no release, but this is how much they own him. Now, going further, I want to speak on some things. Last Wednesday, with the information that I've gave, once I left the meeting and I got home, I was, police showed up at my house and I was three oh two. Because of, basically because of the information that I'm getting, I guess they're trying to stop my voice, or if anything that I say won't be valid, but it didn't work. Of course, I went down there and I was released within an hour. On Facebook, a poster made that I was an addict, and all these things are defamation of character to stop my voice from being heard, but where it backfires at is that once I was three oh two, and of course, they said I had a sound mind, and urine and blood was taken, and nothing was in my system but marijuana. So that right there, I want to know, like, on, on getting that done, for somebody to get somebody three oh two, it has to be a petition of some sort, right? I can't know who was the petition. I can't find out who, who, who was on the petition. But I, but you guys would be able to do that.
Was it the county that three oh two'd you? Local law enforcement or the county?
It was the local law, it was the law enforcement, it was SWAT there, actually. But I would like to know who was on that petition, because that's who was harassing me. It's definitely a defamation of character, and they can't be denied. Also, as far as my case, I spoke on it, I spoke on Deanna Muller. She's ready for you guys. At any time, at any time she's ready, nobody has contacted her, but she's ready, so you can contact her and get that information, and it will clearly show injustice on the police. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you. Gina Vasquez. Elizabeth Give. Okay. Brandon Basem. I don't believe he's here anymore. Gene Still. Thank you, Gene.
Gene Still, Fishery Valley. Today, I just handed you a, something that you can read on your own at any time. It involves one of the, one of the aspects of Three Mile Island. I'm not going to read this, of course, but one of the main components of a nuclear power plant is the steam generators, steam generators. So in that paper, just note that steam generators are going to be one of the things in the eventual, when they file their, when they file their papers to get a license, it'll be one of the key things, key things that is talked about. And so, just so you're aware, what a steam generator is, what has to, and what the problems are looking at as we go forward, but I'm not going to talk about that much today. But the other thing too is that there's so much mention of prisons, of the prison day, and rightly so, what's going on there, and from the Three Mile Island perspective, how does a prison fit in? The prison fits in in regard to the, in regard to the evacuation planning. Just so, anything that the Constellation Energy does in regard to evacuation planning, they'll make sure that the, they say that the prison will be evacuated and it'll be safe and things like that, but I will postulate that there is no way to evacuate the Dolphin County prison, especially in line of the fact that at the same time, you'd have to evacuate the Camp Hill prison. So, so the prisoners, as they've been getting short shrift in the past few years, and for many years, in regard to their healthcare concerns, will get short shrift by Constellation and the impossibility of evacuating them, and they'll be assigned to be sheltered in place, which doesn't mean they won't be affected by radiation. Anyhow, so that will be one failure of the evacuation plan. So that's all I have today, and I thank you for your time. We'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gene. Next up, I have Cedric Humphrey. David Graybill. Kamika Campbell.
I'm gonna do it right this time, it's hairy. Kamika Campbell, Shippensburg, Pennsylvania, and also young professionals of color. I'm here today to thank you, actually. Thank you, Commissioner Douglas, for actually stealing a little bit of my thunder, but I did want to come here today and say thank you very much for supporting Juneteenth HBG, the county has supported now for, I think it's the third or fourth year running. We had a week of events. We started on Saturday the fourteenth with our first-ever Juneteenth parade, and we ended on Saturday night at Harrisburg Midtown Arts Center with our Juneteenth HBG concert. We had over fifteen states. We topped our eleven from 2023, of fifteen states represented. We had over seven thousand people out throughout the week. We had a beautiful summit on Wednesday, where we welcomed Congressman Al Green, Dr. Mike Eric Dyson, an attorney, Corey Minor Smith. We had over a hundred and forty-eight people at Harris and Chatter, also Harrisburg University, for that summit who hosted us for the day. And I led a session on the state of abolition and state of, the mindset of abolitionism period in Pennsylvania. We looked at a sermon that was given by W.R. DeWitt at Market Square Presbyterian. He was an abolitionist pastor, and I also had somebody presenting with me named Celeste Trustee. She works on sentencing reform, mandatory minimums, and we were talking about how Juneteenth was, especially in Pennsylvania, was connected to, and emancipation was connected to how people are treated in prisons. And I brought that up a little bit before, but I wanted to expand on that. We, in Pennsylvania, sit in a very, very important state for emancipation, but also we have a chance to really connect those dots, to talk about how we're going to reform, how we treat people within the prison. One of the things that we drew a parallel to was the fact that the same excuses and the same reasons that people did not want to free slaves are the same reasons and the same excuses that people are using not to treat people properly in prison. And I want our Commissioners to know that we are doing the work of educating our people, but the policy needs to catch up, and the, and what we decide is fair for people at every level of society in our county needs to catch up. We are doing that hard work. We are bringing in the presenters. We are raising the consciousness of the residents, but we need your work to catch up to that. And this is a plea from me, from the thousands of people who are celebrating, from the black and brown residents, from white residents, from Hispanic residents. What affects the least of these in our county affects every single one of us. And so I plead with you, not just for this healthcare contract, but for the overall treatment of people at Dolphin County Prison, and for their family members, to please consider what policy reforms that we can enact to make the treatment of those who have to live in that prison and who have to interact with that prison more fair for all. Thank you.
I no longer have anyone on the list, but if there's anyone who would like to give public comments.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Robert Williams. I'm a lifelong resident of Dolphin County and the city of Harrisburg. I'm here before you for the third time in regard to an incident that happened to me in the Dolphin County courthouse, where I was attacked while exercising a constitutional right to redress and grieve a government official and also report law enforcement. This incident happened on February twenty-fourth, February twenty-sixth. I filed a preservation letter, Act twenty-two request, and right-to-no request for the video footage. I also filed an internal complaint against the sheriffs, which was picked up by CID over four months ago. I have yet to have any updates with the complaint. I have, and the video footage that recorded the incident was nefariously deleted. I have a few directives that I would like to address to Commissioner Prias and Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Prias, Prias, sorry. As public safety liaison, I ask you today to issue a written directive by the end of this meeting, ordering immediate forensic imaging of every courthouse DVR, NVR drive and off-site backup, and to confer in writing within forty-eight hours that the imaging is complete. Within seven days, please docket a public record, including the camera retention policy in effect on February twenty-fourth, any disposal authorization of records committee certificate, the full DVR, NVR audit logs showing who and when the override command was executed, the chain of custody for all remaining copies of backups, and sworn statements from Director Enders and Administrator Bender, explaining under penalty of perjury who authorized the deletion, when and why. Place Director Enders and any technician involved on paid administrative leave until the audit results are published. At your next meeting, introduce an ordinance extending courthouse camera retention from thirty days to a hundred and eighty days, requiring dual signature disposal certificates, mandating quarterly public compliance reports, and freezing discretionary camera system funds until the first audit is, audit report is released. Chairman Douglas, you emailed me that you would launch an internal investigation into this deletion. I have reached no update, I have received no updates. Will you please state on a record today who is leading that investigation, its scope, which steps have been completed? investigation, its scope, which steps have been completed, and when will this, and, excuse me, and when you will release the interim report for the public? All of these requests fall squarely under your authority in Title 16 Pennsylvania Statute 509, 1701, and 1702, and 1782. Prompt transparent action will protect the county from spoilation, sanctions, and liability. Silence will only deepen it. I ask you place these directives and deadlines in today's minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'll answer one part. I certainly did share that. I believe our Chief Clerk is working on that, and we will, once I have information. Did you want to make any comment or not? Okay. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Graybill?
Just real quickly, just as an FYI, it's not often known, Sassafras Island out of the
Excuse me, sir. Could you please state your name for the record? I'm sorry.
Name for the record. You got to start with your name.
David Grebe.
Thank you.
It sounds like I'm talking to people that already know that Sassafras Island is part of Dolphin County Parks, and I'm steward out there. So I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of that. I also do some sampling with the Susquehanna, Lower Susquehanna River Keepers of water on Swetar Creek and the river. And we've been finding this year that the water quality is not even swimmable because of E. coli through most of our testing, partially because of the rain and the runoff. So there's a couple of issues that I know you're probably well aware of, the Harrisburg city sewer, what happens there, but also the runoff from different farmlands and so on, is very much a concern. And we publish a map on the internet, so that you can see what is green, yellow, or red, whether you can even swim in here safely. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and encourage you to try and help with some of the Dolphin County Conservation District people that are acknowledged here. So, thank you again for what you're doing.
Anyone else for public comment? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Arwick, seconded by Commissioner Pries. We're adjourned.